Open session agendas approved. Flag salute Scott, help me. All right, please. Well, flag. My pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Comments from the public, members of the public may address the board on any subject not on tonight's agenda. However, provisions of the Brown Act, Government Code 54954.2A and .3 preclude any action. As an unengagized item, no response is required from the board or the district staff and no action can be taken. However, the board may instruct a superintendent to agendize the item for a future meeting. If you would like to address the board on any item on the agenda or one that does not appear on the agenda, please on Zoom, click raise your hand button and you'll be called upon in order. When it is your turn, please state your name, address, and if you have any students in the district before making your public comment. You will have two minutes to make your comment. Those wishing to speak during a specific item will be called on at the appropriate time. So thank you for your participation in this civic engagement. Scott, would you?
Yeah, we have Robert Jung and this hand raised.
Okay, Robert.
Hold on, and there we go. Robert, you should be.
Okay.
There we go.
So Robert Jung, representing Milpitas Community Education Endowment, live on Park Victoria. And both of my kids have graduated from the MUSD. I'm here tonight to announce our Milpitas Strong Art Contest that goes through November 13th. Our partners are the Milpitas Beat and the Milpitas Chamber of Commerce. And we're out to foster community pride. We like for people to show us what it means by Milpitas Strong. There are three categories in the art contest with the top prize of $100 for first place, $50 for second place, and $25 for third place. Check out the website tinyurl.com/milpitastrong. And if you have any questions or need more information, you can reach us at info@mcefoundation.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, and so if anybody else would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. It should be under the participants button at the bottom of your screen. This is something new that we're doing, so there's more, you know, engagement with the public and allowing them to use their own words and voice. And so if anybody would like to make a comment, please raise your hand and let us know. Let's give them a few minutes, but nobody has their hand raised at this time.
Okay, that's the case, we are going to move on. MUSD strategic goals. Member Min, would you, Min No, would you please help me with that?
Sure, President Liang. Our strategic goals for MUSD, number one, build a culture of we that engages parents, staff, and community partners in supporting student success. Improve communication systems for better outreach to parents, students, and staff. Develop educational pathways that allow our students to apply their passion and learning for their future careers. Focus services and support systems to ensure that all students are engaged in their learning and are making social, emotional, and academic gains. Identify creative, student-focused strategies to accommodate enrollment growth and ensure healthy learning environments.
Thank you, Melon Young. Superintendent's report. Superintendent.
Thank you, President Liang. Tonight, we are honoring our students who were a part of the National Merit Scholars semifinalists. And for those of you who saw in our social media, Scott Forstner, our communications specialist, highlighted each one. And then they had their stories in our most recent edition of School Life. And I would like to give each one an opportunity to say one sentence about what inspired them as a national scholar finalist. What inspired you as a national semifinalist for the merit scholars? And let's start with Thomas Chin.
What do you mean by inspired?
What? What is, let's just make it simple, what inspires you?
What inspires me? I don't know, I guess part of it is probably just, I want to be the best at like what I do. And that's basically it.
Okay, that's, that's more than just basically it. That is something that is what a leader does. Thank you, Thomas, for sharing that. How about Basma Faith Chumon? What is it that inspires you? Basma, are you here?
I don't believe she's here.
Okay, let's go with Lydia then. Lydia Wang.
Okay, um. I guess what inspires me, well, part of it is I just like seeing people be passionate about what I do. Like maybe they don't always have to do the best job, but when I see people having fun, really putting their all into like a certain subject or a couple subjects that they're really good at. It makes me want to do better myself and like basically do the best I can while also working hard, playing hard is what motivates me to do a lot of the things I do.
So it sounds like working hard, playing hard, and then looking at other people that you can learn from. And that inspires you going forward to be the best that you can. Thank you. And how about Matthew? Matthew Song.
All right, well, I guess Tommy and Lydia covered it pretty well, at least for me as well. I strive to kind of push myself to be the absolute best that I can. And I also kind of try to find, I guess, you know, a balance between my work and fun, kind of those things. And also I have to give credit to the adults in my life, like my teachers and my parents. They really inspire me to, you know, do the best that I can and become a better person.
Thank you very much for sharing that, Matthew. And it is important for us to have a balance in our lives amongst all of the things that make us who we are. And to recognize that the adults in our family and the adults in our lives. And once you become an adult, the others in our lives that can inspire us too. Thank you for sharing that. How about Kapali? Kapil Maladi.
I think what inspires me is partly to be the best that I can be. And knowing that in the future I can help other people. And also somebody comes from my parents and the people around me because I want to be like them.
So something that you added, Kapil, is doing something for others. That is inspiring when we could do things for others. And I see you have the world map behind you. And as we do things for others, it impacts our world and our community. I really appreciate you sharing that with us tonight. And how about Priyan Jindal?
Priyan couldn't make it tonight, she actually emailed.
Well, I appreciate you, Thomas, Lydia, Kapil, and Matthew for being here. And Priyan and Basima, we wish you could be here too. We are proud of all of you and inspired by you as you look at life and your journey ahead. And recognize what you have within you will propel you forward in whatever it is that you find is your purpose. Whether that be to make an impact in the world, provide some service to others, be a leader, or learning, learning from those who are wise and passing on their teachings to other people. Thank you. Another person I'd like to recognize tonight is our student from Adult Ed. Her name is Ms. Honda Amery C. Koglu Tunesar. And she won the Cow Works 30th Anniversary Client Achievement Award. And Ms. Tunesar is somebody who aspires to be a teacher. And and she has tremendous talent and skill. And there was one little thing that she needed when she came to the United States. And that is to develop more of her English skills and also to transfer the credentials that she has from her country to the US. So she is in process of doing that. And we want to recognize you today. And what inspires you?
I can say my dad inspired me all the time because he, he's a very kind man. He helps all the time. And he's, he's like a warrior because he started to work when he was 16 years old. And he, he still works. And I think he inspired me all the time.
So it sounds like he inspired you to continue persevering and going for what it is that you want to do to fulfill your life, no matter what the challenges are. And we appreciate you doing that.
Okay, thank you so much.
And Lieutenant Jordan, may I say a couple of words as we have a so tonight I have with me Ms. Min Nguyen. And she is the Cow Works representative that has supported Handy in this wonderful journey. And we also have our Assistant Principal of Adult Ed, Avin Magaña, here with us tonight. And I just wanted to add to Handy's story that this has been a collective effort and a collective impact that we have all made. As Min represents the county's safety network and also Eastside Adult Education, which supports Milpitas Adult Education and the services that Handy was able to make. Also, within the county services, Handy was able to get work paid experience that gave her just the, the little bump that she needed to move forward. And I am just so excited, Handy, and impressed by your story. And like other students that have presented in the past, you are also an inspiration to all of us. And I thank you for being here tonight. Thank you, Superintendent Jordan.
May I add a few things?
Sure, please do.
Yeah, that is me, Wen. I just want to echo what Juliana just said. It's a team effort. Everybody has contribute a little bit to Handy's success. She came as a foreigner, struggled to learn English with her five-years-old child. And it took a few years until her husband could join her. And she felt immediately welcome when she started her ESL class. From walking to the campus with the office staff greeting her cheerfully. And I would come to Milpitas Adult Ed once a week to meet with her, work with the teachers. So I just appreciate the team effort that Milpitas Adult Ed has enabled all of us to reach out and help our students to achieve their goals. Thank you.
Thank you, Min. And you're right, it is a team effort. And our Milpitas Adult Ed is one aspect of our school district that all of our school board members really take an interest in. And in particular, President Liang, as well as our Assistant Superintendent Norma Rodriguez. I see them both frequently at our adult learning to provide support. And President Liang, would you like to say anything on behalf of the board in regards to the adult school opportunities that we have? And in particular, especially for Handy, since we're here tonight to celebrate her?
I, I, I want to congratulate you, Handy. And I just want to share my personal story. When I first came to the US, from a 14-year-old girl who has just lost her father. And with my mother with 12 kids, she had to stay strong and send all of us to school. All my sisters, because we are, all my sisters and brother who was 18 years or older, due to the adult ed, they were able to continue to learn English so that they can get a job. And my mother tried, my mother tried going to Adult Ed too. But she was never in school in Vietnam, so it, it was so hard for her, she gave up. And we at home were teaching her a word here and there, but she kept on speaking a few words. I am so grateful for the program, for all the teachers. And I know that they want to do what's best for the newcomers. And now that I'm a board member, Adult Ed is here in our district. I do want to give the support and I do want to do all that I can with our team to provide the education to the adults.
Thank you very much, President Liang. Before we move on to our next recognition, I would like to go back to our National Merit Scholars because Kapil is here, Kapil Maladi. We heard from Kapil. Mr. Forstner?
Yes. We, you spoke with.
I see. Never mind. So we got Kapil. However, Francis Rojas, the principal of Milpitas High School is here. So as long as we're still at this point in the agenda, Principal Rojas, would you like to say a word of congratulations to our National Merit Scholars?
Yes, I would. Can you all hear me all right? Yes?
Yep.
Okay. So thank you for inviting me tonight to, in part of recognition of our six National Merit Scholarship semifinalists. This is a process we are always happy and blessed to see every year. We get notice around September. And each of our six National Merit semifinalists have worked closely together with our counselors to, to put in their application for the finalist position. And in a couple of months, we will learn which of our semifinalists made it to the finalist level, as well as those who receive a financial grant scholarship that comes with this. But I do want to say thank you to Thomas Basma Faith, Priyan Kapil, Matthew and Lydia for representing not only Milpitas High School, but also our Milpitas community at a national level. It takes a lot of hard work to get to this level. In academics, you did very well on your PSAT that you took last fall with us at MHS. And along with your academic performance at MHS, you represent the best of the best in our community. So thank you to the six of you, and I wish you all the best on this next round. As you have already submitted last week, your application for the National Merit Scholarship finalist level. Congratulations.
Thank you, Principal Rojas, for that additional information to let us all know. So now we know Thomas Basma, Lydia, Kapil, Matthew, and Priyan, we're all reading for you. And we want to hear the results so we can see you back. So we've heard how our adult learners, as well as our high school learners, have looked at themselves and their skills in order to use those towards fulfilling their sense of purpose and service to others. And our next recognition is somebody who has definitely demonstrated throughout his life and his career, a desire to give back. And that person is retired Golden State Warrior Adenel Foyle. And through his kerosene lamp foundation, he donated funds to ranchos that our students, who are of the greatest need, would have wifi. So tonight, we would like to recognize Mr. Adenel Foyle. And I would also like to invite our teacher, Mr. Ken Chu, to say a few words before we ask Adenel to. Ken?
Oh, good evening, Milpitas community. Adenel Foyle's been just very gracious to the Rancho family. He's spoken to the Rancho staff a few years back. And then he read his book to the entire Spangler student body where Luis Lopez was principal and had a great time. And he's just, he's just always very giving to Milpitas. And we're so blessed to, for his generosity and his kindness. So take it away, Adenel.
Oh, no, I just wanted to thank you guys for helping me. This is, this is really unnecessary. I, I think that one of the greatest virtues that we have is the ability to help those in need. And I think that has been my motto for most of my life. I just, I think that every young person deserves an opportunity to be in an equal playing field and have an opportunity to compete. And I think, you know, if we can do that and ensure that for all kids, I mean, that's what all of us want. So it is my honor, thank you guys for recognizing me, clearly not necessary. Really, the extraordinary prayer should go to all the parents trying to navigate this, this crazy time. But I do, I do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Adenel.
Bye, guys.
Thank you to all of our leaders for taking time to be with us tonight so that we could recognize you and share our appreciation for your work. President Liang.
Yes. Superintendent's Executive Cabinet's report, that will be you.
Thank you. I would like to first ask Principal Stephanie Park of Curtner. And she is in her first year as principal at Curtner, so I'm excited to hear her report tonight. And in particular, she will also be talking about, I shouldn't say she, but she and her team, which includes classified team members and parents and certificated team members. They'll share with us their experiences thus far in MUSD, Educate Everywhere, as well as students from Curtner. And then Ms. Park will provide an update on student engagement during distance learning. Ms. Park.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the Board of Trustees, Superintendent Jordan, Executive Cabinet for the honor and the opportunity to highlight Curtner's journey through distance learning. So currently, we have 720 students with 99.2% attendance and close to 100% engagement. We continue to reach out to the handful of students facing challenges with inconsistent internet connectivity, illness, or other difficult circumstances. And this evening, we will, we will be sharing how and what Curtner is doing to foster the culture of we with our students, our staff, and parent community to support student success during distance learning. We're not only looking at this year, but positively projecting how distance learning is an opportunity to build and support our community in the years to come. Tonight, we have representing Curtner, two fifth-grade students, Mia and Vivian. Our teacher, Mr. Topham. Mr. Kavidia, a sixth-grade parent, and our PTA president, providing their perspectives on how distance learning is going. Followed by our para-librarian. And concluding with how Curtner is using our elementary counselor in conjunction with our mental health counselor in servicing students, staff, and parents to continue building the foundation of we for success. So we'll start with Vivian.
Hi, my name is Vivian Ford. I'm from Curtner Elementary School in fifth grade. Thank you all for taking the time out of your night to come. For those of you who are wondering how social distance school is going, it's going pretty well. For some students, it may be hard because of internet issues, but other than that, it is good to see my classmates and teachers' faces every day. Some things I enjoy most is seeing everybody in the fun team-building activities we do. We also have virtual classroom jobs. My job is SEL Leaders, which is a group of four students who helps lead a self-awareness lesson for the class, along with fun activities. Some challenges are mostly internet issues, freezing, cannot hear, etc. This experience has taught me to be more organized, how to solve problems, and be on time and more. It's also cool realizing how you're going to be in history. Zoom is really popular because of this quarantine. For example, I'm on Zoom for dance, acting, school, band, piano, and lots more. Thank you for your time, it was fun being here today.
Mia, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Nara or Mia from Ms. Taku's class in fifth grade at Curtner Elementary. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and it is a real pleasure being with you guys tonight. So the first couple of days of online learning was a little hard for me, since it was new and kind of hard to settle in. But now it is going amazing. I am getting work done, and unlike real school, for some reason, I seem to pay more attention and learn new things. I have learned to face and resolve challenges like tech issues, and now it's going really smoothly. Ms. Taku and every teacher really helped us organize everything. Many of us are really sad about not physically seeing each other, but during online school, we form small work groups in breakout rooms in Zoom to support each other and have fun together. It feels like we are literally meeting each other. As I said in the beginning, technology is an issue such as power outages, lag, and problem solving in independent time. Although tech can bring challenges, I have learned to solve problems with our class and time management. Thank you.
All right, I am Mr. Topham, and I am one of the fifth-grade teachers. And it's definitely been a new experience, even though I've been teaching for quite a few years. It's just a whole new, it's a whole new thing, as we all know. It was overwhelming at first, and there's still a lot of work to do. But definitely getting into a consistent routine has helped us a lot. I think teachers and students and families as well. Our fifth-grade team has spent a lot of our time at the beginning of their discussing social, emotional learning thus far. And the students have been super patient and supportive throughout everything, especially helping one another solve issues that arise, a lot of technological ones. And I think that reflects our SEL discussions and just their positivity and their attitude in general. They've been amazing and made things a lot, a lot more manageable with the help of our students. Each class has even had at least one student lead one of those SEL lessons, as Vivia had mentioned before as well. And it's just awesome to see the students take the lead and build up one another. We also just finished recently a week of meeting with parents and students to talk about our progress and to create goals for the students. It was really nice to get together with the families and give and also receive feedback. and give and also receive feedback about what was working from our end and also from the parents' end and families' end as well, and then how we can adjust that to move forward in a positive way. And I definitely have felt a positive connection and the support from our families this year.
Hello. My name is Mauricio. I have two kids. Both of them went to Curtner. My son's a fifth, and my daughter, she moved on to Russell a couple of years ago. She's an eighth grader now. But, you know, what I really want to say is that, you know, how I look at distance learning as a parent is that I'm very grateful that we have the tools to actually execute on distance learning, right? And I'm also grateful for the district's decision to commit to it for the rest of this calendar year. It helps alleviate some of that uncertainty that we had at the beginning. I'd like to see this going forward, you know, as part of our educational landscape. I see it as a possible solution, you know, maybe providing options to students and families to engage and succeed, you know, augmenting traditional classrooms and facilitating interventions for average students, something like that. It's going, now it's going very well, I think. In the beginning, you know, like, you know, these are kind of echoes of from what we've heard before, but we have some growing pains, right? Connectivity, platform stuff. And some of the tools were not fully developed, you know. This is still, I see this as developing thing to get better. So, you know, we had a couple of social-emotional rough spots near the beginning. We started off good. I think just that human connection, the lack of the social aspect in the school did affect my kids in some way. I think more for my older daughter. I think just because they were more used to seeing your friends and all that interaction in school. So, but now it seems to have subsided. We've had a good stride. The kids seem to have a good grasp on what's required and how to get their work done. Much less parent involvement, I think. I mean, not involvement, but much less interventions from the parents to make sure that the kids are getting their work done. They're pretty independent. For the, and on the PTA perspective, you know, the challenges have been community building, membership building is just slower. The process is slower. We don't have that direct connection face-to-face that we used to have. So we're finding ways to, like, reach out through Parents Square and other ways. So all that's taken, it's a lot slower than it used to be. But we're doing outreach. We started a Curtner Ask program. Thank you, Ms. Park, for the suggestion and the initiative. So we started with that. We have a few parent volunteers. We're bilingual. And the initial intent was to provide, like, technical help for parents with language barriers, right? So we reached out to a few parents that speak, that are bilingual in different languages. And we started getting some questions. And it was at first only for parents, but we also had some teachers also come to us to help reach other parents that were having some issues with their students' engagement. So I think it provided a good tool. Room parents is another thing that we're working on to outreach and build our community. We piloted this last year. We're continuing to grow it this year. I think it's a great way for parents to get involved in a more personal level with their child's classrooms and their teachers. And it's a more direct connection, I think. And it's a good way for us also to build that connection at a higher level and break things down, break tasks down at smaller chunks, making it more manageable for everybody. And that's about it. Thank you.
I think my camera is not turned on, so. So it's my turn now?
Yes, Ms. Pham, go ahead and go.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Chow Pham. I'm a classified employee, worker in the library for 13 years at Curtner. My role and responsible as the librarian is to encourage reading by making books accessible for students to check out, as well maintaining the Curtner Library Collection, and also request book online, Google Form. In distant learning, we feel it is just as important to continue to provide consistency and routine. We're checking our library book. With the help of our new supervisor, we are providing an opportunity to get books into the hand of our student. I think this is important because it's allowed the student to step away from the computer and relax time. And student and parent can go to the Curtner website to see over 17,000 books available for checkout. They research their book via Google Form, and then on their digital library day, student can pick up book by driving to the parking lot. So far, we have been able to check out over 140 books. We hope that more will come to check out books. We have also created virtual libraries in our website, where staff can read a book aloud to the student. We just started this month, but we hope that more people will be encouraged to record their read aloud. Currently, we have one book in Japanese, but we hope to upgrade more book in other language in future. And thank you, everyone, for having me tonight.
All right, good evening. So my name is Jinky Patanga, and I'm the elementary school counselor at Curtner. My primary focus is with Tier One and Tier Two supports and intervention. So I think Stephanie's going to project a visual of an upside-down pyramid, just so you can get an idea of what those kinds of supports look like. There's a bunch listed there. But if you look at the top part, the green part, that's the Tier One. So it could be just kind of, you know, directed towards all students. So it can include like PBIS, SEL curriculum, our best procedures, things like that. And then Tier Two would be more, a little bit more targeted. So it could be like an SEL group, but with like a targeted, specific skill. So it could be like social skills training and things like that. One way to support this is through our implementation of an SEL curriculum called the Zones of Regulation. So this curriculum helps students regulate their actions that lead to increased control and problem-solving abilities. What we did is we started teaching our staff about the zones, then began to roll out the lessons per grade level classes for students. This week, we will also be providing parent education. It happens this Thursday. Ms. Doi, who is our mental health counselor, will give you more information at the end. But our goal for the zones is to include everyone in the learning process and implementation, so that parents and caregivers can also support SEL at home and in turn, support student success. So as far as other things I'm doing in my role to support just everyone, students, parents, staff, our check-ins with students and parents to provide support as needed. I will begin grade-level lunch bunches to build and maintain student connection. We have a weekly Curtner Comforts. It's a way to check in, provide emotional support, share self-care strategies and build a connection with the staff. And then, of course, I have, you know, the usual meetings with grade-level PLCs and other counselors, including our admin, to discuss like student needs, you know, discuss in vet cases, reflect and plan SEL curriculum and get consultation and guidance. I also touch base with even the elementary school counselor at Palmeroy, just so we can kind of gain and trade ideas and then, of course, maintain that connection. Some of my future plans to add would be creating small group lunch bunches, sort of more like Tier Two for targeted SEL support. And then maybe even including like a parent caregiver office hour, especially after we've implemented the Zones of Regulation. That way, if parents have any questions or are unsure about things, we can talk about it and kind of help support them implement that at home. And then another thing is just peer support groups, things like homework club, buddy system, maybe mentoring or coaching. I've kind of started a homework club with like a group of students, and it seems to be helpful so far. So then, because of its success, you know, I was going to try to kind of implement it with maybe more classes and things like that. Overall, though, when I think of what I can do for students, families, staff and the community as a whole, what I reflect on is our strategic goal on culture of "we." What I want to do is really create a culture of connectedness with a group of people striving together and working together to promote and support student success. So we definitely need that team inclusion with everyone. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Patanga. My name is Carrie Anne Doi, and I am the mental health counselor at Curtner. This is my first year in the position, and my role is primarily Tier Three work. However, I have also been putting in a lot of work in Tier One and planning and implementing the Zones of Regulation curriculum with Ms. Patanga. Throughout this school year, I've been working in collaboration with the elementary school counselor and site administration at all three tiers of intervention to bring a mental health perspective to the classroom, ensure that our work is not duplicated, and to ensure that all student needs are met. Currently, I see five kids on a weekly basis for individual counseling to help meet their social and emotional needs. In addition, my role involves bi-weekly communication and consultations with teachers and parents of students on my caseload, as well as attendance of weekly grade-level PLC meetings. In circling back to the culture of "we," I believe it to be crucial not only to engage students, parents, staff and community partners, but also to promote connection between everyone. As Ms. Patanga mentioned, in deciding to roll out the Zones of Regulation curriculum to students and teachers, we also wanted to include parents, caregivers and a larger community to promote a sense of connection in supporting student success. And here is our flyer for that parent training that is taking place this Thursday at 7:00 PM, which you are all invited to attend if you would like to. Thank you.
Back to you, Stephanie.
That includes our presentation. So we just thank you, everyone, for your time and for listening to some of the highlights that Curtner is doing and continues to do as we go through distance learning and also looking ahead.
Principal Park, can you make sure that that invitation for that Thursday goes out? That we get a copy of that, so we can put it on our calendar for those that are available to attend?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Principal Park, you started off by saying the foundation of "we." And every speaker built on that foundation of "we." Nera talked about problem-solving and tech skills, and Vivian talked about SEL leaders and students being those SEL leaders. And I thought, wow, what a great way to make sure that's infused and students really internalize it. And also, Andy, Mr. Topham, picked up on that theme of what the students working alongside us, things are working really well. And as an aside, I know Mr. Topham has always demonstrated being a leader and redesigning teaching and learning. So I appreciate that about him. And then Mauricio, as a parent leader, sharing that this is something that we can learn from to go carry forward and taking those nuggets that are working, like the interventions, and continuing those with the MUSD Educate Everywhere in Distance Learning. And then developing a parent program called Curtner Ask, that's focused on English learners. And then Chow, and our new supervisor, is working to maintain consistency and routine so that students, you said, I think 150 or so students so far have received books through a virtual drive-through as well as an actual drive-through. And then Jinky, talking about the Curtner Comforts and hitting on the Tier One and Two of our interventions, and working along with Carrie Anne to do the Zones of Regulation. And also, Jinky, you mentioned the culture of connectedness. The way that your whole team, Principal Park, took strategic goal number one, culture of "we," and really demonstrated what a true, what we can really accomplish when you have all team members working together as one, rather than trying to do something for another, but working in concert together. I really applaud the work that you're all doing. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the team.
Thank you, Principal Park. Great work, everyone.
Okay. And now to our executive cabinet. And let's start with Assistant Superintendent of HR, Jonathan Brunson.
Hey, you threw me a curveball. Let me go first. Nice. Good evening, everybody. Hope everybody had a wonderful three-day weekend. I extended to recognize our indigenous people here in, not just in the United States, but in our local area. So I'd like to report real quick that I'm continuing to work with Diana Orlando and Michelle Kissinger on how we can work together to ensure our staff is safe and well-supported and as we start to re-engage on our campuses around the district. So I look forward to our continued discussions as we work with our associations and their heartfelt work that we so appreciate that they do each and every day on behalf of our 10,500 students. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that we're going to open enrollment employees. So if you like your health benefit package, you don't need to do anything. Good news for Kaiser, we didn't see the uptick like we did last year, so there won't be that much of a difference. United Healthcare, a little bit more than we wanted to see, but we are still very, very competitive across the state with other insurance groups. So I'm really proud of the Santa Clara County School Insurance Group and the work that they do to ensure that our rates stay low. Also, I'd like to shout out, I support Quanis and our Key Club, and Christine Den is our new president this year at the high school. And she put together a tutoring team to support our elementary, junior high and our middle school and high school students. And every spot got filled. I put the invite out to our site leaders, and they put it out to our teachers and staff. And every single member that wanted to be a tutor is now tutoring our kids and just supporting them. And it's that giving back, I think, that helps them, but also receiving that extra help is so wonderful. And most of our schools are taking advantage of it. Hopefully, we'll expand it some more with some more Key Clubbers wanting to be involved. And last but not least, just wearing the pink and the ribbon. You can't see it maybe right there, but it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And we all, each of us know, a lot of people that have either are going through the process, have been through the process and are no longer with us. So just want to keep that on everybody's plate as we finally, you know, get the cure someday and beat this horrible, horrible disease. And that's it for my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And now let's have Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez of Learning and Development.
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan. Good afternoon, members of the board and public. The entire team in LND has been working collaboratively to complete the targeted supports framework, as well as a rubric to prioritize students' needs as we begin to plan for the in-person targeted supports. These tools are tools for our sites to use to design what works best for them. These documents were created with an extensive feedback from teachers from preschool to post-secondary, as well as paraeducators and special educators and association leaders. And we're looking forward to piloting these documents as we ensure the safety of all of our students as we plan those targeted supports. In addition to that, we had studied the in-person outdoor assessment center for special education, and we're looking forward to seeing how that works for our students as well and our team. We have been immersed with the work collaboratively with the state agency, collecting qualitative and quantitative data to inform two plans that we are charged of completing and bringing to the board for approval. One is called CCASE, and the SEP. A CCASE stands for Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervention Services, and the SEP stands for the Special Education Plan. These two plans required an intensive analysis of our practices, and we have been working hard, convening focus groups from the community, as well as two stakeholders groups that are scheduled for November. Again, the plans are due in December, and we're planning on having a board study session to bring our board and the community up to speed with the work that we've done thus far. That's it from LND.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Rodriguez. And now Assistant Superintendent Zing of Business Services.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all virtually tonight. I have four reports tonight. The first is good news for us from USDA, US, the United States Agriculture Department of Agriculture, so USDA. And they extended the waiver. So that means the school district can offer free breakfast. And they extended the waiver, so that means the school district can offer free breakfast and lunch from December now all the way till the end of school year. So that is really a good news for our student nutrition program, and this will allow us to continue to provide free meals to the community and also to generate additional, I mean, income for the program. Second part is from our parcel tax oversight committee. We had our first meeting on October 1st, and at this meeting, normally the staff will share our parcel tax expenditures from last year and as well as our plan for the current year. And just so you know, our parcel tax will expire on June 30th, 2023. So, and we will need it sometime in the future to plan for, to about our future on the parcel tax. The third is from our MOT department. And tonight, you probably see, I have an agenda and asked the board to approve a resolution, and the MOT department is working on to apply for a grant to replace additional two large bus, so I'll share more detail tonight. And that work is started, because normally it takes at least two years, and if we're lucky, to get approved for the grant. And lastly, it's from our accounting department. And as you know, this year, the state required the school district to do a budget review for parents, and we will need to adopt that template in December, as well as we're working on our first interim budget update. So right now, we're, the first interim is the major, is now our first budget update for the current year, so we're working on that, and then, and also, we're also working on that budget review, so we can share with the board and the community in our December 1st board meeting. So that concludes all my report tonight.
Thank you very much, Executive Cabinet. Scott, is there a public comment?
Yes, we do have a hand raised from an attendee, Martha Kang Chen. Stand by, we're gonna... Okay, Martha, did you have a public comment?
I thought you asked me to talk about Confucius, and I have a student, I'm not sure if she, she's still, she's going to read a resolution for Confucius that you sent it to me.
Yeah, she's on here, and...
Katie.
Katie, and then that is the first action item that we have.
It's not, we don't have to say now? Not yet, Martha.
Oh, I thought, I thought, okay. So when it's time, can you just call Katie? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
All right, Board Group Agreements. I would like to call on Board Member Si to read the Board Group Agreements.
Yes, if you could put those on the screen, please. The Board Group Agreements are provided for the board's ready reference as a reminder of our conduct as elected officials. Keep learning and achievement for all students as the primary focus. Ask questions for our own understanding. Be open and honest with each other. No surprises. Includes unapproved communications with law enforcement, news media, regional elected officials on behalf of the district and/or board. Be aware that our behavior in the community reflects on us as a team. Communicate proactively with each other about topics, questions, and challenges in open session and in advance of public board meetings in compliance with the Brown Act. Participate in professional development and commit the time and energy necessary to be an informed and effective leader. Actively support the culture of "we" in action, deed, and opportunity to serve the students and parents of the Milpitas Unified School District.
Thank you, Board Member Si. Since you're added, would you also continue on with the board communications request?
One second. So, yes, I will give my report on what I've been doing. So earlier today, I had the phone call with the County Public Health Department, so we're getting the latest news from County Public Health about responding to the pandemic. I attended our Assembly District Community Heroes Awards for 2020, hosted by Assembly Member Kanson Chu, was held out here at the Extension Campus, and it's always good to celebrate those in our community who step up to serve. It was the parent-to-parent community meeting the other night. Went to the JPA Executive Council and Board Meeting for Metro Ed. Went to the Santa Clara County School Boards Association Meeting. And finally, I'm continuing to read everything I can about COVID-19. As we all know, this month started off kind of scary, because even the president got COVID. So, you know, please take it seriously. Anyone can get it. The virus does not care how important you think you are. And there was a mayor in Tennessee who recently got it and passed away tragically, so can please stay safe, wear a mask? Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Si. Board Member Ng.
Thank you, President Liang. So as for my activities, I attended the Parent-to-Parent Connection Meeting as well. I'm enrolled in the California School Boards Association Masters in Governance Courses and completed the Foundations of Effective Governance Course, the Setting Direction Course, and the Student Learning and Achievement Course. I attended the District Title I Parent Meeting, attended the Rose Elementary PTO Meeting, the Santa Clara, Santa Clara County Office of Education, Navigating Schools reopening webinar, participated in a parent-teacher goal sending conference, attended the Milpitas Rotary Meeting, the Santa Clara County School Boards Association Annual Meeting, the MEASD Town Team Hall, the Santa Clara County Elected Officials Call that happened earlier today. My family and I received our flu shots, and I just really want to remind the community that the public, the County Public Health Department and the County Office of Education both still recommend getting your flu shots even during this pandemic, so make sure to look up the available times that is available for you and works for your schedule. Lastly, been attending the Milpitas candidates forum for our city council and mayor, and I really want to say congratulations to our Milpitas High School students for really doing a wonderful job moderating the questions on one of those forums. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Ng. Kelly.
Thank you, President Liang. Okay, here are my items that I went. The MUSD Team Hall, Burnett PTA Association Meeting. I attended the Robson Home Groundbreaking, which you and President Norville was there. Office of Education at Navigating School reopening webinar. The Chamber Board Meeting. Also, went with Travis to do a walkthrough with some of the campuses. For example, Burnett, they repurposed a multi-use room roof, so it's good for another 10 to 15 years. Weller had paving and roofing. Milpitas High roofing, paving, painting. Spangler had paving, roofing, bathroom, piping, wall, and toilet. Zanker had their paving and sidewalk. And also went to Milpitas High, and since I'm a liaison for Chamber of Commerce, we were able to bring back the business closet where Chamber will have some slightly-used business attire, and I will bring it to the Business Academy for our students who are in need. Went to the Burnett School Site Council Meeting and MUSD P2P Connection, Elected Official Call. Last but not least, we had our PTA Council Meeting last Thursday, and I want to, you know, take this time to thank Sylvia Diaz for her service as our current PTA Council President. She's relocating out of state, so we're having an election to fill the president position. Our VP is also stepping down, so we are looking to fill that position as well. Sylvia has done an amazing job, and she will be missed greatly. Whoever is taking over for Sylvia has big shoes to fill, so good luck to Sylvia, and thank you.
Thank you, Board Clerk Shina Yichuan. Vice President Norwood. Unmuted.
I always do that. Yeah, I appreciate it. Kelly, thank you for sharing, thank you to all the board members for the information that you shared and your continued commitment to being active on behalf of the Milpitas Unified School District, parents, teachers, and the children that we serve. There were a number of things that were already mentioned that I also was able to attend as well, so I will highlight a few things that were not mentioned. The Santa Clara School Boards, Santa Clara School Board Legislative Action Committee Meeting, the City School District COVID-19 Meeting. But the real highlight of my last two weeks was hosting the City of Milpitas Economic Development and Trade Commission Manufacturing Day this past Friday with over, with more than 400 participants that learned about some of the advanced manufacturing opportunities for our students and adult learners and parents that exist in the city of Milpitas. It's an amazing place for advanced manufacturing. It was a very amazing day, and hopefully, we're looking forward for the video coming out, and we'll be able to share that with anyone, and that's the time for my report.
Thank you, Vice President Norwood. And for me, I would use this time because every, everything and all the activities were mentioned, either from Board Member Ng or Board Clerk and the Vice President. So thank you. Keep up the good work. Okay, we are moving on to Report. Safety First Campaign, Superintendent.
Thank you, President Liang. I asked our team members who are heading up our MUSD Safety First Campaign to give a brief overview to the board and to the community about our efforts, and the reason is because it's paramount that in order for us to move from Phase Two to Phase Three of MUSD Educate Everywhere, we need to make sure that the conditions are safe for team members and students, and it takes all of us working together to make that so. So I'd like to invite our safety team with Director of HR Damon James, our Communication Specialist Scott Forstner, our Assistant Principal of Adult Learning, who is also my designated at the Public Health Department as our liaison for those times when we have COVID cases, Eva McGinnis, and also our Supervisor of MOT, who also serves as a part of our safety team, Milton Casada.
Superintendent Jordan?
Yep.
One quick note, Kelly had mentioned, I know we have a good audience here, but Kelly did mention about the election for the PTA. Is there a possibility that we could send out something on parent square to make all the other PTA representatives and members across the district know that those positions are available or out there?
I will ask you, Scott, to connect with Kelly, and I know Sylvia is still, I believe she's still with us, she communicated with me yesterday. Ask her for the information that is needed and that we can send it out that way.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Safety Team.
Damon, are you on to kick us off?
Safety, an important frontier. These are the endeavors of Milpitas Unified School District's Safety First Campaign. Its one-year mission, communication, to explore new methods of promoting safety, to seek out new partnerships and new safety behaviors to boldly do what no person has done before. It starts with us, staff, students, and families. We are your Safety First Campaign.
Our first area mentioned on our galactic mission is communication. We aim to promote, educate, and empower staff, students, families, and to establish a safety-first school. We aim to create a central resource link to all safety-first materials. We aim to consolidate information from SCCP HD, CDC, and County Office of Ed. We aim to share district safety measures attributed to COVID-19. We aim to set the tone for each staff member's responsibility to safety first.
We aim to promote safe practices, routines, by encouraging each person to be a safety upstander who follows safety routines before, while, and after school and work. And some of those safety routines you can see are to make sure that you have your mask or face covering before you leave for school or work. While you're at school or work, make sure you social distance at least six feet. Wash hands, sanitize frequently. Always wear your mask or face covering while you're at school or work. And then continue with the practice after school and work by following the county health guidelines, limiting your large social gatherings, and monitoring your own health. So we aim to continue to help others know and follow the Santa Clara Public Health Department guidelines as part of promoting safety and keeping staff, students, and families apprised of the most updated information given to us. Scott will tell you how the Safety First Team will continue to regularly promote safety through communication.
Thank you, Evan. Yeah, so this slide right here is basically, this is putting our campaign plan into action, and it's what we've been doing this month to promote, educate, and empower staff, students, and families, because it takes all of us to reach a safety-first school and a safety-first district. As you can see here, we've done some Safety First info shouts. The first one came on October 1, and Evan's gonna bring up the email that we sent out. It was the Santa Clara County Public Health Department COVID Transmission Charts. Those were given to staff, and so they're gonna print them out, share them, put them in their classrooms, their office space, so it presents different scenarios if there was a potential exposure and how to act on that. In the same info shout, we sent to parents ways that they should, rules, steps that they should follow if there's something within their household. So that was one example, and at least once a week, we're going to send out info shouts to staff members, to families, to students, because we're all in this together. Depending on the audience who are looking to capture, the communication method can come in many different forms. It can come in an email blast to staff. It can come in our social media channels to the entire community, and it can also come in a parent square directly to our parents. So as a Safety First Team, it's been a pleasure working with everybody and continuing this, we will continue this throughout the entire school year, and whatever phase we are in our phasing-in plan, we will we will continue to do this to promote, educate, and empower our staff, families, and students to have a safety-first school and district. Thank you. And now we're open for any questions you may have about the Safety First Campaign or Safety First Team.
Hi, Scott.
Hey, Chris.
How are you?
Doing well, doing well.
Good, good. Thank you for, thank you to you and the team for taking on this endeavor where there's lots of things going on. My first question to you would be, how are you gauging? How you, what is your metric of success? Or how are you going to measure if the campaign has been, is, is being successful?
Good question, and I think with that, the proof is in the pudding. As we continue to phase in the 2020-21 year, we want, you know, everyone to be educated on safety practices and precautions. And as Evan showed in her slide, it comes before school starts, during school, and then after school. It doesn't stop throughout the day. So when we have, as we phase in, when we get to parts, when students are wearing their masks, they're comfortable wearing their masks because we've been promoting wearing masks for when you get on campus, to always have your mask on. And I think that's, you know, that's the way we'll, we'll have to gauge it.
We also have, you know, some events that are planned. So the flu shot administration, we can take up to 150 employees at this first trial. So we'll be able to gauge the success of that if we have, if we're sold out essentially, right? So if 150 employees sign up to get their flu shot, then that's a success. And we look forward to another day in November with some actual data as well.
One of the things that I might ask you to consider is that the, the technical team or IT, they have, they have strategies on how to measure programs and committees or activities that are going on with metrics of measurement. So for example, I know that you guys are sending out email communications and you want people to read those communications. You want to see call to action. You want to see responses to communications on certain things and also be able to gauge which ones are more successful than others and why. So I think there are some strategies that they may be able to assist you with in terms of that because you are competing, as exciting as this is, you are competing for mind share. You are competing for time. You're asking people to read another email or, and even as important as this is, you're asking folks to do one more thing. And so you want to be thoughtful on the fact that we are doing that and then how we measure how that's going to occur on an ongoing basis. So Mopetis becomes safer. The school district is safer. The community is safer. And of course, our children are safe as well.
Yeah, definitely. And we're gonna try to use many different forms of communication, maybe instructional videos to see a firsthand account of a safety measure that needs to be taken, as well as, you know, the things I've mentioned previously. So you're right, we've got to capture them through the visual and as well as audio.
Additionally, in the presentation, we had spoken about having one central location to house all of the material because you're right, absolutely, that people are inundated with information on many levels. And so we were talking about putting that in one particular space. So, you know, usually you go looking for information when you have an issue, right? So it'd be easy to just go to one space, grab it, and know what to do.
Thank you. Awesome. Appreciate that.
I see Scott, there's hand raised.
Oh, okay, let's see. Yeah, we have Robert Jung with his hand raised with her public comment. Give us a second, we'll get his audio going. All right, Robert. Robert, you're still muted, I believe.
All right. All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was clicking the unmute.
All right. My suggestion is that you guys have a great plan, but I didn't see anything where you could get the students involved. Maybe have them do TikTok videos or get them excited to pass the word on and like to see the students involved. That might be a good way to measure your success.
That's, that's an awesome idea. Thank you so much.
That's all.
Thank you, Robert.
That's a great suggestion. There's another.
Yes, we have Michelle Kessinger with her hand raised, so we will get her in for a public comment.
Hi, yes, I have a question for the, for Evan and you, Scott, and Damon. My concern is, is that regarding staff, when we do come back onto campus and holding one another accountable, there's been situations, even speaking now while we're not back, when there's some in the office that, you know, how do you address those that do follow process and those that do not? I understand holding each other accountable is, you know, a great way to advocate for us to all follow safety procedures. But there are some situations now that are coming to the forefront of those that are following rules are being shunned or not treated correctly. And I'm afraid that, I don't want that happening in our, in our classrooms, nor in our offices and in the places where we're supposed to have cohesive environments. So I guess what I'm saying is, this is becoming those that follow rules and those that really don't believe this is that important. How are we gonna address that? And what are the, what have you guys talked about that at all about holding that accountability process with each other? But yet, some people aren't comfortable enough to do that.
So Scott, let me interject for a moment.
Yeah.
That I think is something that we can discuss at Association's Roundtable. I also think that the Safety Team might consider some ways that part of the campaign is like a see something, say something, perhaps going along the lines of our three commitments that we've made during our cultural sustainability professional learning and that we're focused on this year. Because one of our commitments is to say something or take action when somebody does something that will harm another person. And while the context of that is in regards to words and diversity, I think we can also look at it as a way to protect each other physically. And that means that if somebody is not adhering to the safety standards, it could potentially be harmful physically. So if we carry, carry that one commitment forward and tie in the safety first, we could also address Michelle's concern about empowering others to speak up and say something when they see someone not wearing their mask or not making an appointment to come in or eating in the same space as another person during the break room. So I think we tie it all in. That way we can address those concerns.
I'd like to also respond to Michelle. I, again, I really appreciate Michelle for your comments, and thank you for bringing that up. You raise a good point, and I would like to lead by example. I'll just share my own story. Even very early on during this pandemic, I was following very closely the news coming out of China that I was getting from some friends and associates there. So I knew it was something that the US was underestimating. So I was wearing a mask earlier than others. And I'll come out and say this, when I was wearing a mask, there were certain individuals in the community who tried to make disparaging and derogatory sort of mocking remarks about me for wearing a mask. And so I had to endure that myself as a board member. So I can only imagine for even just other members of our community, they, maybe they don't want someone else doing that to them. And let's just be clear here, that's not okay. No one should be mocked or disparaged for wearing a mask and insisting on safety protocols. A lot of safety is also about promoting a culture of safety and not trying to make fun of other people, especially for political reasons. Unfortunately, we've seen this issue become politicized to some extent in our country. And let me just come out and say it, that's not okay. Public health and safety should not, and should not be politicized. So again, if you see something, say something.
Well, thank you, Board Member Si. I think, you know, Michelle, we're, we're the Safety First Team, and we're gonna promote and educate and empower. We have been doing it for quite some time, and we're gonna continue doing it. And I believe education is a powerful thing. And if we can educate our community and our families, our students and our staff on what is the best safety precautions and measures to take to not only protect yourself, but to protect the others around you, that is what we want to do as a Safety First Team. The enforcement of that is from the site, and they're the ones that are, you know, face-to-face with that. But we'll do the best we can to educate and empower those in our MUSD community.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any other questions for Scott or Damon or Evan?
Thank you, Superintendent Jordan and team for moving forward with the, with the Safety First Team. Thank you, Michelle, for the question about, once we are educated, there's a possibility that there are those that are gonna choose not to, not to adhere to the safety protocols and how we're going to address that. I appreciate Superintendent Jordan, you mentioned that that discussion is at the Association's Roundtable in terms of how that accountability is determined and measured effectively on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, President. Superintendent, moving on to the bond oversight. Wendy?
Okay, good. Well, thank you, Hong. And as you know, we have our Measure A passed on November 6, 2018 for 284 million. As part of that bond measure, the district formed Oversight Committee, including nine members representing the citizens from the city. So tonight, we have our Chair from the Bond Oversight Committee, Tom Verlory, to present an annual report to the board. This is a part of the bylaws from our Bond Oversight Committee. And we will do an annual report to provide an update to our district board. I have the written report attached in our agenda. What I can do is I can also share my screen. And of that item, well, Tom can present his report on behalf of the committee. So Tom, you're on.
Good evening, board members. I believe I've had occasions to meet each and every one of you on one occasion or another. And I've had the pleasure in the past of attending many school board meetings. But I've never had occasion before being able to address the school board without having a time constraint associated with it. But anyway, don't fear, I have very few words to actually say. But before I get started, I have a quick question for Vice President Norwood. Is that next generation?
Yep.
Just as a matter, if you ever need to, I have a copy of every Star Trek TV series in Blu-ray disc in my library. Anyway, as Wendy said, a committee of citizens of Mopetis was formed. I drew the short straw, short straw became chairperson. And the Vice Chair is Joseph Weinstein. And the other members are listed here, and I won't attempt to pronounce everybody's name and butcher it, but I'll let you review it. But briefly, as, as you're well aware, that in accordance with Bond Measure AA, an independent citizens oversight committee was appointed to assure that the funds acquired from the sale of Measure A-related bonds are being spent only on the district projects outlined in Measure A. And that's what we said about doing in our meetings. With regard to meetings, we're obligated by law to meet at least once a year, but we did vote to meet at least biannually and more often if it became necessary. Very briefly, during the course of our meetings and the information we reviewed and the audit report that became available to us, we were able to come to the conclusion that in fact, Measure A bond monies were spent in accordance with what was outlined in the Measure A information that was presented to the community and getting it approved by the community. And with that, I really have nothing further to say other than to ask, answer any questions that you might have.
I recall a question for you, Tom. I'm sorry, go ahead, President.
And I was coming to thank Tom for the presentation of his report, and I'm checking on the hand raised. I don't see any hand raised here. Go ahead, Chris.
I recall, I recall prior to this bond and this committee being formed, there were concerns by the community about lack of transparency and the ability of this body to be able to communicate with the superintendent of the board regarding issues or concerns. Did you feel that those issues have been addressed? And if you have the ability to speak freely about issues that you may be concerned about that are directly related to the Bond Oversight Committee, as you see the progress being made in the bond?
I, there haven't been any occasions that have come up that really directly are related to your question. So I guess the answer is no, because there haven't been any, there haven't been any occasions where questions were raised that required the answers by the superintendent. And as a matter of fact, Wendy attends all meetings and if there were issues that needed to be addressed by the district, I'm sure, I'm sure Wendy would have been able to handle them, but I'm sure Wendy would have been able to handle them, but there haven't been those kinds of issues that have been raised. At least up to this point in time.
Thank you.
And also, if I may, and we, our goal is try to make um our bond program as uh transparent as possible. We publish the Bond Oversight Committee meeting dates in advance with the agenda. We also provide a report, and we will publish all the reports at our district's website. And and also, we welcome committee members to join our meeting. And they, but they cannot vote, but at least they can be a listener or just attend our meeting. And so as far as I'm not aware of there are any issues and uh more uh and also now Superintendent also attend our uh Bond Oversight Committee meetings too. So if there are any questions, and then they can also directly reach out to our Superintendent or myself.
Thank you.
Tom, I actually have a question for you, and and first and foremost, I want to thank you and the rest of the uh CBAC Committee members for your your volunteer time um in participating, doing the oversight um in regards to the Measure A funds. Now, on on top of looking at uh the 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 budget, do you look at the overall timeline of the projects as well? Uh, is that discussed during the CBAC uh committee meetings?
That information is presented. Does that cause much in the way of discussion on the part of committee members? I would have to say no. I mean, we're not in, we're not in a position to be able to or we don't have the knowledge level to be able to ask, I would say, informed questions about a schedule. We are made aware of what the schedule is, and and uh we've had no reason to take issue with with the schedule, nor has any committee member uh been made aware of by some other source outside of the committee of any issues that they needed to raise. So, yes, we are made aware of what the schedule is. Uh, we don't really have, I would say, a basis for actually questioning the schedule uh because it's being presented. Um, Wendy, uh I I can't recall his name right now. Who does the presentations on the, basically on the schedule and 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 the uh progression of the construction effort?
That's Travis. Travis.
Travis, right.
Yeah, he is now our bond uh program consultant. So at each meeting, and we will project, we will list the project update. And also, so in that update, we'll provide an estimated schedule. And also, we we share our issues with the committee. For example, at the last um Bond Oversight Committee meeting, we shared with the committee that there are some issues at the matos and because of the scheduling. And there are, the major reasons is from the DSA, the OPSC, um their approval, we're waiting for their approval at a time. And the uh so because their approval is late, that possibly push back our construction schedule. Yeah, so we share those kind of information with our committee.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Wendy, and thank you for the transparency. That was my question and ensuring that the committee is fully informed as far as the the money spent and also the project timelines. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions for this item, so I'm moving on to the next item. Uh Assistant Superintendent Business Services, the next item is yours.
Yes. And well, but thank you, Tom, so thank you for your report. So this um tonight, we would like to share with the Board and the Committee uh procurement uh process district-wise. Uh, we're going to focus on three major areas. One of them is the construction projects. So you will see what is our process in regards of uh uh contracting with the vendors and to, and also how we purchase materials and equipment and as well as the operations of our student nutrition, the bid and the warehouse works. We have our team tonight to share a short presentation with you. And first, we'll start with our bond contract manager, Kelly In. Kelly?
Um Sandy Guata and I wanted to share the district's procurement process to provide an understanding of our legal requirements. This is a multi-step process to obtain goods and services competitively. Oh, next slide, please. Sorry, one more. Uh, Public Contract Code 20110 requires us to competitively bid for equipment, materials, and services that are over ninety-five thousand, two hundred dollars. This dollar amount is adjusted annually by the Superintendent of Public Instruction. For the majority of the district supplies, supply purchases, we use piggyback bids. These bids were previously awarded by another entity using the same mythology that we would use. Some examples would be the National IPA for Office Depot and Corona Norco Unified School District for Southwest School Supplies. If the district needed to go out to bid, we would advertise it in a local paper such as Mercury News for a minimum of fourteen days. We would open the sealed bids publicly so that all parties would know who submitted the lowest bid. There are a few special services that we are not required to obtain bids for, such as our auditors, architects, and construction managers. But our district did require firms to submit a request of qualifications so that we may evaluate them prior to awarding a firm. Next slide, please. We are part of CAUPCA, the California Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act. This gives a district additional flexibility when bidding construction projects. Without this program, we would need to bid on construction projects over fifteen thousand dollars. But since the district opted into this act, we are able to save time and money since we are required to bid on projects over sixty thousand dollars. Depending on the cost of the project, there are different requirements that we would need to follow, such as projects between sixty thousand to two hundred thousand dollars, we would need to advertise and select trade journals for ten days versus projects over twenty thousand dollars, we would need to advertise twice um for a minimum of fourteen days prior to bid opening. Next slide.
Okay, so it's the, it's Sandy.
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, so, okay, Sandy, so this is um child nutrition purchases then.
Can't hear you, Sandy.
Sandy, are you on mute?
There you go. Can't hear you.
She's having a technical issue that um
Can you hear me?
There we go.
Can you hear me? Okay. It did say unmute, so, okay, let me share my screen again, sorry about that. Can you hear me now? Yep. Okay, awesome. Okay, so I will be speaking about the procurement practices related to child nutrition programs. And as a recipient of federal dollars, we are expected to procure goods and services in proper manner. So regardless of the dollar amount, uh our goals have always been to maximize competition that are open and fair and to get the best value at the lowest price. Um, there are three different uh methods depending on the dollar amount. Um, and in many instances, we use the stricter requirement for our purchases. So first one, micro purchase is any transaction less than ten thousand dollar. Uh, we may select supplier or vendor by an unrestricted open market process. Uh, this usually you um method is used for small items like office supplies, small grocery purchases uh or buying parts for uh equipment repair. Um, for small purchase, uh is any transactions between ten thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we can't make any purchases without seeking at least three competitive quotes. Uh, so the common purchase would be equipment. Um, so even with equip uh freezers and refrigerators that cost less than ten thousand dollar, we use this method to ensure that we get the lowest price possible. So what we would do is we know exactly what uh model and brand that we would like to purchase. We find three vendors and ask for their price. Um, and lastly, the formal procurement is required when we have an aggregated purchase of over two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. Uh, this is most commonly commonly used for our food contracts. Uh, formal bid is a very lengthy process that takes months. So we first have to identify and forecast our needs, the specific products we want to bring in, the usage amount for the whole year. Uh, then we put a contract together with specifications and expectations. Uh, then we have to publicly advertise it, uh and on the due day, we open seal bids. Um, once we have all of the bids, we evaluate the bids, the proposals. Uh, once we select the vendor, we seek um board approval and award the contract. So ultimately, we want to award it to the the most responsible then uh bidder. So there are a few things that we do look at, and one, the most important is, of course, cost. Uh, how do we get the same product at the lowest cost? Uh, we want to look at customer service, are they responsive um to requests? Um, are they able to fulfill our orders in a timely manner? Uh, do they have the infrastructure to meet the high volume of our needs? So one order of our produce order could be at least a hundred and fifty cases of whole apples. Uh, are vendors able uh have that volume to fulfill? Are they knowledgeable in child nutrition products because it is a niche market? Um, are they financially sustainable? Um, are they able to meet uh the Buy American provisions? And for new vendors that we have never worked with before, we commonly do a reference check. So now I would like to turn this over to our warehouse lead, uh Guadalupe Tenoco, who will share with you the activities and operation of our district's warehouse.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, hi. So I'm gonna give you a quick overview of the warehouse operation um uh for receiving and storing items. Um, so what we do is the warehouse staff receives goods and verifies that all items are delivered based upon the packing list or POs. Um, and then um received items are labeled and put away by stock number. Um, also, we take our receiving paperwork and it is forwarded to Kelly at purchasing to update our inventory in the QSS system. And within that process, uh back orders are tracked and vendors are contacted due to shortages, overages, damages, uh quality of products, et cetera. Um, once that's done and the items are in the system, then that's when district sites are able to order through the QSS system and goods are pulled and delivered according to the store's order that we receive. Um, and then, of course, uh physical inventory is performed twice a year for stock accuracy. And just to add a few more things, um we do consider our storage options in the warehouse. Um, fast-moving spat, excuse me, fast-moving items compared to slower-moving items. Um, and we do, and we have developed order points to retain stock quantities. That way, we don't run out of especially important things. Um, we do rotate stock as needed, and um so that's just a quick overview of what the warehouse operation looks like. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Guata, and thank you, team, for your short presentation. And one area I also would like to touch a little bit is how we evaluate a contractor or vendor after we work with that vendor for many years. And normally, what our uh our process is, for ex, uh we will get the inputs from the end user first, so that's our internal process. For example, we had a architect work on our summer construction project. Once the pro, the summer projects were completed, and we will get back to the principals and to the staff saying, hey, what is your experience working with this um architect firm? And then they will provide us, um it's sometime they'll provide directly to me the feedbacks. And then if we think, okay, and this architect, there are some areas for improvement. And normally, I will reach out to the company, to the firm, and have a commu- uh conversation with the firm and to let them know what is, what are our feedbacks and act also what they're thinking. Because sometimes we would like to see what what is the best way and what is the most effective way to get a project done, so we can have both sides of a story. So that's a one way to evaluate by asking input from the end user. The other way is also to evaluate their price. And because we have a country, we have a contract with the vendor before. And then when we have a new project for the same vendor, we'll ask them for a proposal again. And then we will, what we're going to do is we will compare their proposal with the current market price and also with the previous job. And then just to see if there are any big variance, and then why. And right now, with the technology, i- it's very easy, you can Google what is the market price not right now for architect on modernization project. And for us, our project, we follow the OPSC's uh fee schedule. So that is like a form, the provided by the state that uh we will, and the architect, we will ask them to, uh when they quote us the fee, we will ask them to use that schedule. So those are the two major areas that we evaluate our vendors and also the firms that worked with us. And now I'm going to end here and just to see if you have any questions for for the team.
Thank you, Wendy, and the team for the great work. I I like how Sandy presents that cost is high up here, number one. And then making sure that the vendors can complete the orders in time uh with the items that fits our needs. Any other questions for the team?
Guadalupe, how long have you been with us?
Uh, me? Uh, three years.
Me? Uh, I just started my seventeenth year.
Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Well, how about Kelly? We still, well, Kelly has been with us for everything's high school.
Kelly is a great example of strategic goal number three.
Yes.
I I told Kelly's story the other day at the Economic Development and Committee Manufacturing Day, how a student became an employee of the district. So, and Sandy, you may have only been here three years, but the number of hours you put in, you've been here about ten years already, so I'll even count on that. My my question uh is really not a question in the traditional sense, is that um when do you guys get a chance to get together as a team to evaluate the work that you guys are doing around procurement to determine if there are any newer or better practices available for you um moving forward?
Well, I guard, yeah, so so while each of us were chiming a little bit our experience and because and from my angle, I go to like workshops and the conferences, and um from those opportunity, I receive information. And then, and every time there are updates on regulations, so I will share that with the team. And because um Sandy is under Business Services Division, so I oversee purchasing and a bond and a student nutrition and a uh MOT. So what, so basically, when we receive um any information from either other school districts or other entities, normally I will share that information with the team. But then now our team will between Kelly and Sandy and also MOT staff and to work around the process, so I'll let them to share a little bit from their angle.
Pretty much what Wendy said on my end, I attend meetings, I have, we have an email thread going back and forth between many of the different purchasing departments within other districts of just questions going back and forth and people brainstorming. And that's where I get a lot of my information from because of questions that other districts pop up or questions that I have and everyone's, somebody's always able to find a solution or the most updated rules and regs that we need to be aware of and just be reminded of.
Kelly and I work on different contracts and I work specifically on child nutrition programs, food vendors. So I myself have or manage five different contracts on a weekly basis because we do receive trucks on a weekly basis. Every day is a different vendor that delivers to us. And so I am part of the Bay Area Directors Group where we share best practices around procurement and also share menu items too, because when you have the volume, that's when you get the lowest price. We are also part of a Northern California purchasing co-op too. And so we're able to get, you know, the specific items that are or items that are specifically for child nutrition programs. And of course, quality is the number one thing. We deal with food first and first out, food safety and how we store things. So we look for things when we receive deliveries. If there's anything's damage, our expiration date is something we also check very closely too.
Guadalupe?
Yeah, so as far as purchasing for the warehouse stores items, me and Kelly are in constant contact when it comes to, like I said, with order points and stuff like that. So she already knows just from experience and from knowing our inventory that when we're getting low, a lot of times I don't even have to call her, the truck's pulling up. So it's a, it's a really, it's a really constant cycle with, especially like I said, the important items where there is no waiting. It's consistent and we're able to get those items in without incident. So and then with Sandy, we have our regular meetings also where if there's any updates in scheduling or 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 items that are new product, then we're able to go ahead and find storage for it and just make sure that it's available as needed. And that goes for the whole warehouse operation, food, stores, you name it. We try to keep it available immediately for all of our sites.
Do you ever get out to any types of trainings or those types of things, Guadalupe?
You know what, I haven't, but I've been doing this since nineteen ninety-one. I started with the Santa Clara County Office of Education Head Start Warehouse. And so it's going on about thirty years pretty soon of experience. And so with that, I'm able to use my experience to show my drivers, you know, a lot of different techniques that I've learned over the years. And the thing about warehousing is it's never the same. So you're always, you're always having to come up with a new idea or, you know, trial and error a lot of times. So just with that experience, I'm able to go ahead and, you know, keep track of of what's necessary for our warehouse. And then with meeting with Sandy and Kelly, we're able to really keep this warehouse in a good cycle and flowing consistently.
Is Norma, Norma, you with with us somewhere?
Yes.
So I hear Guadalupe, I hear him say a couple of things. I hear him say seventeen years and I'm thinking, okay, we have an expert. We have somebody, an expert. And then I'm like, okay, hope he's not going anywhere anytime soon. And then I hear thirty years and I'm like, oh, we have a subject matter expert. When I'm thinking, how are we, is he, is he going to host a C to C? Have we, has he been considered to be tapped to to be involved so that wisdom can be shared? So that that operation even runs better than it does right now. Again, so again, thank you for your service. I mean, I get excited about folks that have been around us and know what they're doing and then also get nervous because any life happens, you know? And and obviously, everyone depends on you for a lot of different things. So I want to make sure that 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 we're, we continue to stay strong under your leadership in a number of different ways. Norma, any suggestions on that?
Definitely. Thank you for connecting me with him. And so Mr. Guadalupe, I will be reaching out to you for a presentation for in our C to C.
Okay.
Yes, tap your expertise to develop everyone's capacity.
All right. I appreciate that. I'll be ready.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. At this time, I would, I would like to go back to our student rep, Amy Stanley, for her report. I apologize that I skipped you when we were getting our reports. Amy?
No worries. Thank you, President Yan. Good evening, everyone. My name is Amy and I'll be speaking a little bit about what Mepitas High School has been doing for the past few weeks. So in late September, we officially launched our mentor and mentee program, which was established in hopes of bridging the divide between upperclassmen and underclassmen to essentially spark community in our current virtual learning environment. We also successfully executed a virtual photo chain event in which students were able to step away from Zoom and share pictures amongst Mother Nature on social media. And last week, we hosted a student mock election in efforts to inspire the next generation of voters on campus. And students were able to voice their opinions about the upcoming presidential election as well as state propositions. Moving along, as this month is Hispanic Heritage Month, MHS Student Government, in partnership with LSU and Rancho A. Have many exciting events planned for our student body, such as virtual cooking and art contests, a scavenger hunt, as well as a cultural awareness video. We also have fundraisers currently being hosted by two of our student organizations, Operation Smile and UNICEF, in which students are able to support those in our community and beyond from the comfort of their own homes. And last but not least, aside from student government hosted events, various clubs have also been engaging students through virtual meetings, weekly guest speaker panels and virtual community service opportunities. Our efforts portray that despite the fact that we are behind the screens of our own devices, we, the MUSD community, are connected and we can get through this together. And with that, I conclude my Mepitas High School report.
Amy? Amy, next term, there's something like the like the student mock trials or mock elections. Would you be sure to invite us so we can come?
Yeah, of course. We'll definitely do that moving forward.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Superintendent on the action item. And I think this is, the first item is Martha Chen's student.
Yes, this is for honoring the two thousand five hundred seventy-first anniversary of the birth of Confucius. And I might also remind the board that this is the time that in the Chinese community where we normally are able to visit at the Taipei Center to honor all teachers, it coincides with this. So I would also like to honor all of those who are educators. And we know in MUSD, every single one of us is an educator in some way and thank us all for the work that we do. And thank you, Professor Chen, for your work in teaching Chinese to our students and also for leading us in our Confucius resolution.
Can I see if my student Katie here, is Katie here?
No, Katie's not here anymore. I think she had to leave. I emailed her to see if we could get her back on, but I think the hour got too late for her.
Is she here? Do I hear anything?
Martha, would you be, would you read the resolution into the record for us? I can hear, I can share the screen and then you can.
I I have it with me.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Do you want to post, post it to other people?
Yeah, I'll put it up so that as you're reading it, it will be shared with everyone. There we go.
I asked my student because my English sucks.
You're. No, it doesn't matter.
I I also went to adult school when I just came to America. But I have been here for such a long time, but my still sucks.
No, you don't, Martha.
It's okay.
What are you, what are you talking about? You're there sharing with other teachers and you're leading us in the technology for distance learning. It doesn't suck. Read Kate just fine.
When I'm talking something I'm interested, I forgot my English. Anyway, this is really, really good. And in fact, I have more suggestion based on this one. Okay, the resolution twenty twenty-one fourteen, I I I thought maybe I should read it. Honoring the two thousand five hundred seventy-first anniversary of the birth of Confucius. Whereas September twenty-eighth, five hundred and fifty-one B.C., is signed as the date on which Confucius was born in the town of Chi Fu in what is now Shandong Province of China. And whereas Confucius is one of the greatest thinkers, teachers and social philosophers in our society, developed a philosophy that has deeply influenced and continues to influence the social and political thought of countries around the world. And whereas the teaching of the Confucius said that what one does not wish for oneself, one ought not to do to anyone else, what one recognized as desirable for oneself, one ought to be willing to grant to others, is a model for ethical behavior and for the promotion of harmony among people. And whereas Confucius taught that an ideal government is founded upon loyalty, respect for elders and recognition of the importance of family. Now, therefore, be resolved that the governing board of the Mepitas Unified School District honors the two thousand five hundred seventy-first anniversary of the birth of Confucius and recognizes his invaluable contributions to philosophy and social and political thought adopted by the following vote, this thirteenth day of October twenty twenty by the governing board of the Mepitas Unified School District. Okay.
That was great. Thank you. Your English is perfect.
So are we?
Yes, we are. This is an action item. We do need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, in second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, adopted. Thank you so much, Martha, for reading the resolution for our record.
And may I have a suggestion?
Yes.
Because we, I I was from Taiwan. We treat Confucius birthday, we use it as Teacher's Day. As the other day, you can see on Google, I saw some people mentioning about Teacher's Day. But we have been treating Confucius birthday as Teacher's Day instead of the Indigenous Day of the people that we have a day off this Monday. I I wish that we can respect the Teacher's Day as one of our holiday instead of the originally. Isn't that the Monday we have a day off? So I really hope that we can adopt the idea of Confucius birthday and use it as Teacher's Day. It's impossible to make a motion to, see, we are schools. We should respect teachers and we should observe Teacher's Day instead of the Indigenous People's Day or something.
I'd like to respond to that. I I think it's good that we recognize our teachers. I just have one little issue. You you used the word instead of Indigenous People's Day. And I will say, these are really not mutually exclusive. We can celebrate Indigenous peoples as we should at the same time as we celebrate teachers, you know? We all come together. It's not one or the other. And thank you for the idea.
We actually have a public comment from Robert Jung on this topic. If we can give time to Robert.
Yes. Robert?
Hi, Martha, next time you can do it in Chinese and I'll do it in English. That's it.
That means my Chinese, my English sucks.
No, it doesn't.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
We are moving on to be Superintendent.
Okay. This is an important conversation that I wanted to. This is an important conversation that I wanted to have with the board and also with our team members around Title One. I have with us tonight our director of elementary education and Raquel also oversees our Title One program for all schools and some other areas as well, such as our new teachers program. And I asked Raquel and also Principal McMurray of Rancho to be here tonight with us to talk about this request for the board to approve a one-year waiver on how the Title One funding is expended at Rancho. And because we also approved a waiver earlier in the fall, at the end of the, end of August, beginning of September, and it slipped through without a comment. I wanted to also bring forward the principals of Weller and Burnett. So we have also Deanna Satan and Hannah Azra to engage in this conversation with us about the intention of the Title One program and what happens with the funding if we do approve the waiver so that rather than having the targeted assistance program, which goes directly towards those students who are identified as Title One, we instead approve a waiver to make it a school-wide program. What that means to the students to whom the funding should go. And as a brief background, I know Raquel will go deeper into it. I just want to point out that the federal government in designating when a school district can have the school-wide program, their threshold is forty percent. Typically, in my experience, we've had school-wide programs when it's more around sixty or seventy percent of the population. And, you know, we talk a great deal about a culture of we and cultural sustainability, which encompasses equity and also revealing those points of policies and practices that are unconsciously biased. And so I want us to really consider how this procedure would impact our students and if it's a procedure that we might choose instead to disrupt as we take action to live what we said on January twenty-fourth we would do, which is to build a cultural, sustainable working environment and teaching environment and call for those unconscious biases that we have as an institution as well as individuals. So that's the backdrop for why this is not on the consent items, which is where it might normally be found. And instead, we pulled it and I invited the staff to come and talk with us about it. So Director Kusunoki?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Scott. If you don't mind just pulling up the PowerPoint, there's only three slides, actually two. Not counting the header, the front.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
There we go.
So before I begin, I just wanted to give you a little background of what Title I is. Title I program, grant program, is the largest federal grant program that is given to provide, given to schools to help pay for supports and services that we render to students who need additional help, or students who are struggling to meet the academic grade level standards. So that's the purpose of that. And I'm just going to say a little something that Wendy had said earlier. I'm so grateful that we have the free meal program extended for the year. However, I'm also finding that we have a low number of parents completing the lunch application. So I'd like to ask the community for your support in completing those applications so that we can continue to receive the federal funding at our schools. So at our Title I schools, I should say. So the Title I federal grant program, yeah, you can go to the second slide, please. It's two different types of program. As Cheryl mentioned, there's a targeted assistance. And then we have the school-wide Title I program. Regardless of which program we choose to take for Rancho, the allocated funding doesn't change. So they still get whatever the percentage is of their students. And this year, our projection, the projection we used for Rancho and all the Title I schools was their percent of students who received free and reduced lunch in June 2020. So as Cheryl had mentioned, 65% is typically what the state is saying that, you know, you're automatically school-wide. 40%, having 40% of your students who are on free and reduced, free or reduced lunch is also an option to go school-wide. So Rancho in June 2020, their percent was at 38.4, so it's 1.6 short of the 40%, so they can go either way. So I want to talk about the difference between the two programs and hopefully be able to give you some examples.
Raquel, I want to just clarify. You said that if you're at 60%, then you are most likely, you're going to do, you're automatically going to do the Title I school-wide program at 60% or higher.
60, 60% or higher, correct?
Right, automatically. If you're at 40%, then you potentially can do the Title I targeted assistance program or ask for a waiver to do the Title I school-wide program.
Correct.
So, and we were below the 40%, we were at 38.6%.
Correct, 38.4%.
38, okay, 38.4%. And then you said that we could still go either way. Is that right?
Correct. But I wanted to share some of the.
I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure I heard it again. I wanted to make sure I heard it clearly.
You're correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So there are pros and cons to both programs. For Title I targeted assistance, they're actually for both programs, there's a great emphasis on parent engagement, which is a great thing because we always want to engage our families regardless of your Title I or not. But for Title I targeted assistance, I shouldn't say the word, but targeted assistance identifies specific students to provide the support for. And if we're using a targeted assistance program, the funding that we get from the federal can only be spent on specific staff supporting those students who we've identified as needing the additional support. Materials-wise, resources or what have you, any federal funding we receive under targeted assistance is very strict and very specific. For school-wide Title I program, you're still supporting students who are identified as needing the additional support. When I say needing additional support, I'm talking about students who are not meeting grade level standards and regardless of who the students are, right? But the prioritizing, the students that we want to prioritize, our students are most vulnerable students. Our students experiencing homelessness, our foster youth, our English learners, our students who are socio-economically disadvantaged, our students who are receiving resource support at school. That's the identified, that's what has been identified under Title I. And so those are the kids that we always want to give priority to. So under the school-wide program, any child can have access to the materials or the resources that we purchased with the school-wide Title I fund. If we provide professional development using the Title I fund, any, all the teachers are invited to that. Not just the teachers who have the Title I student, but all teachers. That, those are the pros. And then let me go to the cons. The hard part with Title I targeted assistance is if we identify a specific group of students that we want to provide support for, we miss out on the opportunity to offer that to other students, especially right now during distance learning. And I think about especially this year, there's a disruption in March. There's a lot of students who could benefit from the expanded services. The cons again is Title I targeted assistance, title, the funding, the material, and I remember this as a teacher, materials I buy with Title I funds, I have to label with Title I fund and only specific students can use it. It's not open to, so it's not, I don't feel like it's an inclusion, it's not an inclusion kind of a model in that regards, right? Again, personnel, any staff that I want to hire, whether it's para or a teacher, they're only going to be able to work with the identified student. And so therefore with that, it's fewer students can, will be able to benefit from the program. The cons to the school-wide program though, and this is a real thing, and I know this is, this is what Cheryl was mentioning. If we're not intentional and we're not deliberate about our planning and our students, we can lose students just in, you know, in the process, right? Because we're not having to pay attention to specific things that, because it's not as tight as the targeted assistance program. There's just more leeway. Again, with professional development for a school-wide program, my hope is you want to transform the culture of your school by teaching all the teachers and maximizing their potential to be able to reach any student. Which is why I feel like in that regards, it's good. But I also am very aware that if we're not intentional, that can get lost. And now we're in the situation with Rancho who's going to make that decision, but I do know Casey has a, he wants to share his program. Mr. McMurray, are you there?
Sure. Yep, I'm here. So yeah, good evening. Thanks for inviting me to be a part of this board meeting this evening. At Rancho, this is the first time we've ever accepted funds for Title I. We have qualified, I believe, sometimes in the past. But this year, we were invited to receive the funds and to utilize them on behalf of our students who are in these different categories that Raquel mentioned. So we are.
What were the different categories that Raquel mentioned?
She mentioned English learners, foster youth, homeless, students who are in, at risk of not meeting the academic standards. I believe those and a few others she mentioned. Raquel, you want to mention them again?
Yeah, that just the one is students receiving resources, resource services?
Yeah. So we are spending part of our Title I funds on a teacher who is teaching three sections of ELD and all three sections are for long-term English learner students. She's also asked to be a case manager for our student study team students. Those are students who are struggling in school because of, it could be of a variety of reasons, whether it's just completely disengaged or academically struggling, or maybe it's attendance. And so she will be assigned as case manager for those students. That's something that we feel has been sorely missing and lacking in the SST process in the past. And so she has been doing an outstanding job so far with that role. We are providing her with a, an instructional coach who is an expert in all things EL. Her name is Joy Wenke and she works with Cassandra, who's the .5 FTE with the Title I monies. And by the way, she's a 1.0 FTE. We're paying the other half of the salary, but .5 is coming out of Title I. And so Cassandra and our other teacher Cindy are both working closely with Joy, their instructional coach, to develop strategies, pacing, assessment, data analysis, and small group interventions to really impact the trajectory of our EL students, particularly our LTAL students, long-term English learners. We hope to see an increase in the number of students who qualify for reclassification and to really enter high school at a greater advantage. We're also spending some of our Title I funds to continue our work with PK, Parent Institute for Quality Education, which is a nine-week parent workshop series with sessions in Spanish and English. And we are also going to offer an active parenting workshop this year in the early, or was it late winter? Early spring, and that's through the Santa Clara County Office of Ed. So they touch on topics such as effective communication, building courage, redirecting misbehavior, among some other topics. So these are a few things. We did have to modify our initial plan, given that COVID interrupted some of those opportunities such as challenge day, but we hope to look at offering those in the future when it's a more appropriate environment.
Let me understand, you shared that you had not received Title I's in the past.
Correct.
And that the opportunity came for you to, this past year?
Correct.
Not 2021, but 1920?
No, this year. They spoke to me about it at the end of the 1920 school year.
Okay, and so, and so now the choice between the Title I school-wide and Title I assistance, because you're already doing something. Which one are you, which one are you currently engaged in now?
So here's the thing. I was approached with the option of having a waiver along with Weller and Burnett to go to school-wide, just to alleviate some of the paperwork and other, I guess you could call them bureaucratic, bureaucratic protocols that are involved as part of the process of Title I fund spending. And that was something that was recommended at the county level by the director of Title I, at the Title I programs for the county of Santa Clara. So I didn't object and I thought that sounded like a fair offer, given that we were in a much different learning environment and with many different moving parts going on. Possibly one less thing to worry about all the other elements that are involved in targeted Title I fund. What is it, spending?
Thank you.
Now, is this waiver request a indefinite waiver request while we receive Title I funds? Or is this a waiver request that is reviewed every start of the school year?
It's, it's, it's reviewed at the start of each school year. Just so if he goes targeted this year, we can look at it again next year and say, all right, targeted school-wide for each Title I school. If they qualify.
Big, big if.
Gotcha. So you talked about a little bit about measuring student success, but specifically in regards to this waiver, do you have the metrics to be able to assess whether or not the school-wide program is helping the students that Title I funds were, you know, targeted for?
On my end, I'm monitoring their data. I'm there, IXL. I'll be going over through their, their engagement process through distance learning. So there's going to be a lot of monitor, well, that's what I'll be doing is monitoring the students who are in these Title I schools to ensure that they're getting what they need to succeed.
Raquel, you mentioned IXL?
Yes.
Okay.
They have IXL and they're also implementing a lot of formative assessments at their site level. There's a lot of, what we really want to do, and Casey did a real good job of explaining this, is we really want to make sure that there aren't any more LTALs moving out to high school. Let's, let's take care of, let's support them so that when they get to high school, there is no more LTALs. That's the hope. And really paying attention to the students, students who are experiencing homelessness, students who are struggling just because they have barriers.
So let's go back to the previous slide. This is, this is the, this is the slide from the county office?
No, this is not a slide from the county office, but I put in the notes there from my, my conversation with the director of Title I. From Santa Clara County, yes.
Whose slide is this?
Mine.
This was an in-house created slide?
Correct.
Hey Raquel, can I ask you something?
Sure.
So is it, okay, is it Randall and Rose are Title I school and Weller, Burnett, Rancho are the targeted Title I's and that's what we're asking? I guess the ask is for Weller, Burnett, Rancho to have this waiver?
So Weller and Burnett, so Weller's always been a Title I school. It was just last year that their percent of students who received free and reduced lunch decreased, which means that they didn't meet that 40%. So that's the first time, and they've always been school-wide. Burnett has been targeted in the last several years. Randall and Rose have always been school-wide. Now, the schools that you just named, two school-wide for the last several years, Rose and Randall, they feed to Rancho and have a Burnett. They feed into Rancho, so the children still need the additional support.
So I want to repeat what you just said, Raquel. You said that Rose and, Rose and Randall have been school-wide, correct?
Correct.
And they feed into Rancho?
Correct.
And Randall and Rose have been school-wide for as long as you can remember?
As long as I can.
That means they have over 60% of their students that qualify?
I don't have the numbers from the top of my head, but they always had the highest percent, always exceeding the district's average.
Over 60%, because I believe you said earlier that in order to qualify. For over sixty percent, because I believe you said earlier that in order to qualify for Title I school-wide, you have to have more than sixty percent.
Okay, that's the, that's the written um, from CDE, however, it's left at the LEA discretion to determine um, forty percent. A lot of school districts are using forty percent marker to identify eligible Title I schools. Does that make sense?
To me, that you said that forty percent is the um, is the, the low-end threshold marker to determine um, that, that typically leans toward Title I targeted assistance. Sixty percent or higher, you move towards the Title I school-wide program, so between forty percent and fifty-nine percent, or even possibly a little bit lower than the forty percent, you would traditionally look at Title I targeted assistance.
I'm sorry, I, I, I wasn't clear. So, what's written at the state level is sixty percent is the target that's written in their policy, however, they do give leeway to the LEAs to, to identify eligible schools if they're in the forty percent threshold. For targeted assistance school, for schools to be identified as targeted assistance, they have to be above the district level um, average, and below the forty percent. Threshold.
Thank you.
There's a public comment, uh, Scott, would you?
Uh, yes, we will get uh, what is it, Robert Jung for a public comment on this topic, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'd like to understand, since uh, it sounds like the district has both used the school-wide program as well as the targeted assistance program. In those implementations, based on you guys' experience, what program has been more successful?
I'm sorry, Robert, would you say you guys are?
The district, based on you guys' experience, which method, which option has been more successful for our students?
I believe I-
Let that pause rise. Let that pause rise.
I remember at Weller, when we were school-wide, here's the thing, it's not necessarily the program, it's monitoring and being intentional. Because your allocation doesn't change. You want to make sure that you're consistently monitoring the students, you're identifying their needs, you're working with the parents, and it's a cycle that continues on and on. So the, the, the bottom line is, we want to provide the opportunity to children who don't have those resources outside of the school, right? So I can't say one or the other, but I will tell you, school-wide at, at Weller, we were able to support the students.
Can you translate that, Robert?
I will bring Robert back on, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, Robert, go ahead.
Okay, um, so, so at the end of the day, um, if you, if I hear what you're telling me is that it's the monitoring that makes the difference. If that's truly the case, why do we have to decide whether it's school-wide or targeted?
Because part of what I, we, we, well, we need to be intentional when we make this decision, if we're gonna be targeted. These are the stipulations, this is all you're gonna, good question.
It goes to exactly what Raquel said, we have to be intentional, and when it's targeted, the part of the paperwork requires intentionality. That is not necessarily there because, was wide, because that paperwork is not required with school-wide. So, we must be intentional in both cases, it's just that we have to conscientiously determine how are we going to examine that the way we're using the funds is producing the results we're looking for. If it's school-wide, whereas if it's targeted, uh, there are specific pieces of information that need to be accompanied with the targeted. And another key piece too, is that in order for a school to um, operate as a school-wide, they need to first do a comprehensive needs assessment of the entire school. And it's my understanding, uh, actually, Raquel, what you shared with me is that at the county, because we are in COVID, the person at the county is the one we recommended that we do school-wide. And I can only speculate why she would have recommended that prior to doing the normally required comprehensive needs assessment of the entire school before making the determination that we would do school-wide.
Well, yeah, a lot of her suggestion was based on our current situation, and the closing of the schools in March, I'm wanting to uh, expand the services, because a lot of the children are affected.
So I know we're talking about the Rancho waiver today, so I kind of want to circle back to, to Rancho's program specifically. So the, the programs, Principal McMurray showed, those are current programs, not necessarily new programs that would be supported by the Title I funds, is that correct, or am I mistaken?
It's an expansion of what we have offered in terms of ELD, and it's an uh, addition, uh, additional program for parents. PK, we've been doing for the last four years.
So the, the programs to, to mine, you could add here, looking at it, it looks like a targeted program, not necessarily a school-wide program, based on the, the information written here on the slide.
Some of the elements that would have been more school-wide in just the way they appear and the way they function were taken off of our plan, given that they were no longer available uh, due to the distance learning.
Thank you for that.
I see that Principal Satan has a comment. Principal Satan, can you please uh, just share that verbally with us?
Um, this being my first year as principal and getting far more exposure and um, becoming acclimated to the budget, I have been finding that a lot of software programs, resources, staffing, that I would like to implement and use at Weller, there are restrictions on quotas, if you don't have enough students, the spending is hard to justify, or it's hard to um, allocate for the historically underserved populations. When you can apply it to the whole school population, you have more access to some um, resources, that's just money-wise I'm talking. But I just wanted to point out that just because spending, it, it is something that all students can benefit from, these resources we're bringing in, does not negate my intentionality of targeting my historically underserved populations at Weller.
And, and, Diana, you, you bring up a great point, and Casey, I, I want to, I want to be, at least from my perspective in the context of this conversation. This is not about Rancho. This is not about your leadership, this is not about, I always appreciate you every year when you come in, you are iterating on your vision of what it's going to take to help to make the Rancho community successful. As you receive them from your feeder schools, each year, you're tweaking something, you're, you're modifying, you're, you're finding different ways to reach the community. So I, I know that you're always proactive in terms of your efforts of leadership. I, I want to make that very clear. Um, um, it just so happened that um, and, and, and Norma is here, it just so happened that every time I see, since I've been on the board, every time I see the data about our underserved or underperforming students, I'm fascinated that it doesn't change. I'm, I'm perplexed while it doesn't change, I'm, I'm, and I'm, and I'm confused at why it doesn't change. And so, when this particular item came up, in terms of school-wide versus targeted assistance, and, and I had questions. And I had questions that um, the superintendent, rightfully so, said, I'm gonna get the people in front of this to talk to everyone about it so that we can talk about it. Because we do have students under COVID that are gonna be found. But we have, but we'd also have students under COVID for, for historical reasons that are not going to be fine. And, and this, this, and I know that this Title I versus targeted assistance isn't the, the end-all, be-all. But I am hearing some things uh, around um, this language about, we have to be intentional. And I'm thinking, so we haven't been intentional in the past? But that's, that's just me being harsh, right? What do you mean, well, we have to monitor, I mean, we haven't been monitoring? And then I hear, well, we don't have to do that in the school-wide program, but we would have to do that in the targeted program. I'm like, how do we find this combination of intention, this, this permanent intentionality that has metrics that we can measure, because Robert Jung, until Robert Jung is a million years old, he's gonna come to school board meetings and say the same thing. Where's your data? How can you prove what you're doing is working and not working? And for the, and for the six years I've been on the board, and even when he's been on the board, I've never heard that question answered comprehensively. And it hurts. Because, and as this quick side story, I know kids, adults in Elmwood that have been Milpitas Unified School District students. And I can trace it back. And, and that's just not um, where we want to be, or I want to be a part of, as far as my legacy of being a board member. So figuring out across the district, this, as Raquel had put it, this intentionality on this monitoring, um, and where we find it at in the midst of everything else that we're doing, um, is important.
So I, I agree fully with what you say, Chris, I mean, it's all about being um, explicit and intentional. I don't really understand how you could not be intentional with monies and programs. I, I don't work accidentally. I work very intentionally, I try to find out how I could best serve the students who need most support. Our LTAL students have historically underqualified for reclassification, moved on to the high school without being fully prepared to access the electives and all the other programs that they should be able to access. So therefore, I want to make sure that I use the money that we're getting, in addition to what we usually get, to offer more students the chance to get that support. The SST students, traditionally, they go through SST and they're lost. There's not a resource that we could place with them to monitor them, to follow their case, to check, to make sure that they're receiving the interventions or the supports, and working face-to-face with the family, et cetera, uh, that, that, that they need. They need much more intensive and intentional support. And with this .5 FTE, actually, point, uh, 1.0 FTE, um, we are able to much better um, offer those kind of uh, connections and uh, supports that we haven't been able to do before because of lack of funding. So Title I has given us that opportunity to add to what we um, have wanted to do, but have not been able to uh, afford. And so that's kind of the backdrop to the Title I um, scenario that we accepted or agreed to this year.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Alright, I think we have enough uh, discussion on this item, I do need a motion.
I motion that um, we uh, accept Rancho uh, to have the uh, Title I school-wide program waiver.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Um, how am I not, are we, are we out of time?
Or, or, sorry, did you want to discuss more, Chris?
Well, no, actually, there's a motion on the floor and a second, so I guess I only have a choice to vote.
Well, well, um, I don't want to rush Chris if he wants to discuss more. I'm, I'm, I'm open to having more discussion if, if there's a desire for that.
I'm, and I'm okay, and I want to be clear on this, Casey, this has nothing to do with your leadership. You clearly have a vision of what you're gonna do with the funds, whether it was school-wide or targeted assistance. I want to be very clear on that, I, and I, again, um, however, due to the fact that I'm aware, it is evident that we don't have the, some of the things in place in the district, because you've got schools feeding you. And, and we, and we both know what it takes, that during middle school, there are so many things going on with kids, the, the puberty, the independence, there's no more single classrooms, there's a number of things going on with teacher, with kids, that you could only do so much intentionally. With those students. Uh, uh, no. And I'm, and, and best believe that we're, this is not, um, and this is not gonna be the end of this subject. So I'm, I'm a no on this one.
Oh, before I cast my vote, could, could I ask uh, you, uh, Mr. Casey, do you have a preference for how I vote, because I, I'm hearing a lot of good points?
Do I have a preference for how you vote?
Or a recommendation?
Sure, I would recommend you uh, approve the school, the waiver for school-wide.
Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in line with that recommendation.
Alright, so we have Chris Norwood with a no.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, President Liam and the board, I would recommend that uh, while we're granting the waiver for school-wide, that we look at what the requirements are, or would have been under-targeted, and employ those with the MUSD personalization. So we can see how that would make a difference, because uh, going back to what Raquel said, there have been, for a number of years, our school sites that are Title I, because the most of them, except for in the recent past, have been over the forty percent threshold. And so, I don't know that we've ever employed what the requirements are for targeted, and since we we need to find a different way to capture data and capture how we can make a difference, so that data doesn't look the same year after year. I am going to work with staff on looking at what that targeted requirements are, and making them our own for all of our schools that are school-wide.
And I would ask the board, the next time that, that Norma comes up there, and she presents the LCAP data, and she shows where the students are that are underperforming, you, you look at those numbers, and then you ask her to show it to you historically, and then you ask, what have our Title I schools been in the past, school-wide or targeted assistance? So that, you, you ask those questions, the hard questions. I'm not comfortable right now, I, I'm not, but I haven't been comfortable watching that from day one, um, knowing that we could do, we could figure out how we need to figure this out, and it's not on one person, it's on all of us to work to solve this issue.
Agree on that.
Thank you, Chris, um, those are good points.
Okay, so superintendent, what do you want me to do with B?
Let me get back to that page. Well, it sounds like the board passed the request for the waiver.
Four to one, yes.
Three is we.
Okay. Motion pass. Moving on to C.
Okay, this is my item, yes. This item ties to my earlier report regarding the school bus replacement grant. And Director of MOT, Brian Shreve, and, or reached out to the consultants, and if you remember, we, a couple years ago, we applied for the, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and then we received a grant to replace a total of six school bus to electronic bus. And so, district-wide, we have a total of 13 buses. So now with the six, two are, are for the smaller bus, and the four are for the large buses. We still have a seven left. And out of the seven, and we look at in our inventory, two of the large buses are the oldest one, they're over 20 years now. So we're thinking, this is the second round of the grant application process, and we wanted to just to try to apply again. If we can get the, if we get approved, that'll be great, but if we don't, at least we try, because we just got funded, and we received now six school bus in this January, actually, January 2020, we fully received all of them. And so tonight, we asked the board to adopt this resolution to authorize staff to do the grant application.
Thank you, Wendy. Is there questions for Wendy? Seeing none, is there?
Motion to approve the grant application.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Second. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, seeing none, the resolution's adopted.
Thank you, thank you, the board.
Thank you, my.
Thank you, Wendy.
All right, moving on to D, Superintendent, Learning and Development Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Liang. This board item is a yearly standard item regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials. In order for us to be eligible to receive instructional materials funds, as in terms of the lottery from the state source, our, our school districts and county offices of education must ensure that we have fully complied with the requirements of California Education Code 60119. This section requires our local board to hold a public hearing, and that's what we are asking the board tonight to hold a public hearing, and make a determination through a resolution as well, whether or not each of our students in the school district has sufficient textbooks or instructional materials, or both. And the superintendent of each school district and county office of education must provide a written assurance, which is included in, in this item agenda, that we have had assurances of conformance with this resolution. And at this time, present allocations for the purchase of textbooks and instructional materials are sufficient to maintain the provision of adequate and appropriate textbook materials. And we're asking the board to hold a public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Norma, is there a motion to open a public hearing?
Motion to open a public hearing.
Is there a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, any opposed? The non-public hearing is open, and we will ask Scott to monitor the chats.
No problem, and we put two minutes on the clock?
Yes.
Let them out there.
All right. We don't see any public comments, and is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, public hearings closed, and I do need another motion to adopt to approve the William Compliance Board Resolution.
Motion to adopt the William Compliance Board Resolution.
A nice second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, item D is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you, Norma.
And moving on to the consent item. Consent items are considered routine and will be acted upon by one, by the board in one motion. There's no discussion on these items prior to the motion unless members of the board, staff, or public request, you have request that specific items be tabled or removed for discussion or correction. Do we need to pull anything?
Is there anything on the?
We have nothing to pull, is there a motion to approve the consent items?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Kelly, got it.
Is there a second?
I got it first, Chris.
I know you did.
She's just one second faster. I need a second.
I'll take the second, thank you, Min and Michael.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, consent items approved. Okay, our future meetings, we have October 27, November 10, and November 24. Study session at five, closest on the sixth, and open session at seven. Those are the three meetings for now until November, end of November. Are there any announcements or reminders?
Yes, President Liang, we are looking to have a board superintendent retreat on Saturday at 2:30.
Okay. And the location?
Oh, we have not yet determined that.
Thought it was at Hans?
It's to be determined.
Yes.
Not anymore, okay.
We'll decide then. Any other announcements?
I'd like to invite the board to our Latino Student, Latinx Student Awards on the 21st of October. On our calendar.
Thank you for the invite, Nora.
Yeah. Any more?
I'd like for Assistant Superintendent Wendy Zhang to send me her Zoom background.
Well, you have to go to Butcher Garden, this is the picture I took over there.
That's beautiful.
Oh, I did have a question about the October 17th meeting, is that a public meeting?
That's to be determined once President and I solidify the agenda.
Okay.
So wait for the email from us, Michael.
Look forward to it.
Thank you, all right. It is great seeing all of you, thank you for your service, thank you for, thank you, the community members who attended the meeting. I would like to wish everybody a great night. And I do need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Seeing none, good night, everyone.